Testing, one, two, three. This will be the May 4th, 2016 City Council Workshop Meeting, followed by the regular meeting.
Ready?
Today, can everyone like to call the order of workshop meeting in the City Council, Satellite Beach, May 4th, 2016, approximately 6:45. The meeting is called the Interview Board Act. At this time, Dave White.
Please. You can just sit there and make life easy. Dave, if you would, please talk into those mics for us.
Okay.
Also, just, this is real simple. I think you've done it probably a couple of times before. You know, refresh us about yourself and anything you'd like to tell us.
Okay. Been a city resident since 1989. I was involved in the Sampson Island Park Committee back when it was being developed. And since then, I've had some other involvement in city volunteering for re-landscaping Delora Middle School and Surfside. I was, managed to get some grants to re-landscape both of those schools. And I guess what I could bring to the board is I worked at the Florida Solar Energy Center as a research scientist for a while, so pretty well-versed in energy-efficient lighting, solar, PV, that type of stuff. And I actually have a net-zero house, so I don't have an electric bill, which is kind of nice. I practice what I preach a little bit, too. Let's see, I can, I'm an engineer by background. Worked out of Patrick for a good portion of my career. And I'm actually an industrial engineer by degree, so industrial engineers are kind of efficiency engineers. So we look at a lot of different systems, whether it be like a manufacturing assembly line or a hospital, and we look at ways to improve efficiency of things. And I think that would be very helpful to this concept of sustainability in our city.
Well, first, thank you very much for applying for position. It's a new board and a board that started as a committee, and they have a lot to do. We made them a board, and it's a very interesting group, and they're really active, so I think you'll like that. Questions starting from you?
Hi, Dave.
Hi.
I see that you're only interested in the Sustainability Board.
I could be, I do have some interest in some other boards. Maybe the Beautification Board would be the other one. I didn't put that down, but my main interest right now would be the Sustainability Board.
You seem to have a very good background for that. I don't want to be rude, but how old were you when you worked on the Sampson's Island Park Committee?
You know, I was trying to figure out when that was. It was, I think it was mid-1990s, like 1995 or something like that. We were doing, I know that you were either a City Councilwoman or, and you and John Fergus were writing a lot of grants at that time. But yeah, so when I worked there, let's see, I was maybe 35, 40, something like that.
He looks really young. It's wet sustainability, clean living right there.
That's self-sustaining.
We've been having a tremendous response to the Sustainability Board, and it's really gratifying to see folks like you who are so well-qualified for it to come along and apply. And so, I don't have any other questions, but I'm really glad you applied.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just want to welcome you back into the fold of volunteering again for us, and I know just from looking at, you know, what you've done here and your background, I think, you know, you would be very well-suited for what's going on on that board. And, you know, you're going to probably be looking at some of the people that are on there, you know, are just amazing, the things they bring to the table, and I think you would add to that, so I don't have any, you know, as long as you don't have any problem with the night that they meet.
No, that's not a problem. And I've attended some of the meetings, and I really liked the group.
Okay. Good deals.
Made some great selections there.
I think he's answering all the questions I had.
David, I'm just going to kind of echo Dominic's comments. Welcome back.
Thanks.
You do seem to be a good fit for this. As far as I'm concerned, I'd support it with you having been on that board, so, but again, I just wanted to say thank you for coming out again. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you. The way the process works is it's an agenda item towards the end of the meeting. You're more than welcome to stay for the meeting, or we will be in contact with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for your application, and I noticed you've marked quite a few boards, Sustainability being your first, Beautification being second. Is that just okay with you? If we, we'd like to probably use you, the applicants, so, great, okay. Just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. So I'm a fairly new resident of the city. Moved here with my family just about two years, it'll be two years in July. Came here, I work for my, I came here with General Electric Company and had been with them for about 10 years. My division, which is rail signaling, was recently acquired by a different company, so I now work for a company called Alstom. But I'm a project manager in the rail signaling business, and again, I've been with them for about 10 years. Started my career in the Air Force, then went and got an MBA, and then have been working for GE and now Alstom. Yeah, what I'm really interested in with the city, you know, I've got a couple of young children, and just have always considered myself relatively environmentally aware. But honestly, moving to Florida, previously had lived in Pennsylvania, grew up in Virginia, but moving here, you know, I think because of the environment and the, just the weather, you're attracted to be outdoors all the time with the beach here. You're just, you know, made so aware of environmental issues and concerns and raising water levels and things that could have a direct impact on communities like this. And having the young children, I really wanted, you know, I wanted to get involved. I have gotten involved with the Florida Native Plant Society, so I'm actually on the board for the state Native Plant Society. And I think similar, kind of what Dave said, in terms of practicing what you preach, we're trying to trans, make our yard into a all-natives yard. We live over in Jamaica Boulevard. If you're ever going to the library, you might notice it, but, so, really interested with that, and I think that translates to, you know, sustainability and beautification. I met John Fergus actually at a Native Plant Society meeting, and he kind of, you know, really got me motivated to do something with the city as well, so, yeah, I marked down a number of boards because I am, have, you know, wherever my talents may be helpful, I'd like to get involved.
Thank you very much. Question, Beautification Board you marked, too. That's, if I'm not mistaken, a Friday morning board.
Yeah, is that once, it's once a month?
Once a month, at nine o'clock, I believe, on Friday.
That might be possible. We've recently gone to, you may know some of the defense contractors, they do this 980 thing where you have every other Friday off. We've recently implemented that, so I should have some flexibility there, actually.
Okay. Questions? Would you like to start?
I see, excuse me, I see that you graduated from UPA.
Yes.
What year?
99.
99. Well, I went my first two years of college to Mary Washington College, which at that time was the women's division of the University of Virginia. And back in those days, all of Virginia's public colleges and universities were segregated not only by race, but by gender, physical, history. You have marked Conference of Planting Advisory Board and the Planting and Zoning Advisory Board, and both of those, we're in the process of making some major adjustments to those. They're separate boards now. We're going to be combining their functions, so actually the size of, the number of people that will be needed there will be reduced. So it's not a realistic option for any new applicants at this time.
Okay.
So that leaves us with Sampson's Island and Beautification. Have you been out to Sampson's Island?
I have. Actually, my family and I went when we had the day earlier this spring, and actually we had, we had found out about it kind of late, tried to sign up for the boat. We couldn't get out there, but we have a canoe, so we actually took our canoe and went up the canal, which is a little more arduous than we had expected. But, so we did go out that day and saw the island, and I also know Sharon Dolan well from Maple Street Natives through my Native Plant Society, and I know she had worked a lot on what Dominique was referring to with basically reclaiming the habitat out there from some of the invasive species that had sort of grown up and taken over. So I have been out there and, yeah, thought it was great and would like to support that also.
What would you add to that?
Well, I mean, for either of these boards, I think I have a strong business background, so I think that that is something that can apply to really any setting. And I think sometimes with things like, you know, beautification or protecting an area like that, there's, you know, maybe the, more of the people who tend to get involved tend to be more from a scientific background or a background where maybe business matters are not necessarily something they have a lot of experience with. So I think bringing some diversity to those would be something that I could offer. You know, and certainly, working with the Native Plant Society, I have a number of contacts in that area that could potentially, you know, be beneficial as well.
Did you notice that the name of that board is the Working Board, so those board members actually go over to the island and work?
Yes. Yeah, understand.
And you like that?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I'm hands-on. My garden is all planted by me, so, yeah, no problem there.
Okay. And what do you see yourself adding to the Beautification Board?
Well, there, really part of my emphasis would be on native plant species around, you know, and I know that this particular city, that was another thing that really, you know, we didn't know when we moved here, and we feel like we got kind of lucky in that way, because talking to John, you know, hearing some of the history, I know this city in particular has been very active and aware of, you know, conservation issues and ecological issues. And so I think there would be really a focus on native plants and bringing native species into, you know, beautifying areas and just working in, you know, to add that, and I think it already has been there, but just kind of an emphasis on that. And that's one, too, where I think, you know, given the business background, maybe with, you know, if the city is looking to spend funds on some of the beautification efforts, being able to have a critical eye, you know, for subcontracting something or what have you, to really be able to look into the details of the business agreements that go along with that.
And so after our discussion, would your priorities still be, one, sustainability, two, beautification, and three, Sampson's Island?
Well, if I understand correctly that there's no longer space on the Sustainability Board, then, but certainly Beautification and, I mean, really, they're interchangeable in terms of my interests. I would be very happy serving on either one, so wherever the city sees a, you know, that I could be more useful, I'm open to that.
Okay.
One quick question, too. Time from the nine o'clock board on Friday morning, is it more convenient for a Sampson Island Working Board that's after workout?
Probably a little more convenient, but.
I've known Brent and Sharon for probably 30 some-odd years and was actually a member of the Native Plant Society a long, long time ago. And the working relationship that we have with Aquatic Plants of Florida was something that was put together by me in bringing them to our city. They have a bank of seeds that we are able to draw from based on what they pick from our beaches and from our open lands, so I was going to ask you how old your children are, because the Sampson's Island Working Group was something that you could probably get them to help you with, too, if they're interested in stuff like that and you're interested in taking them out there.
Yeah, for sure. My oldest is, she's seven, and she would definitely, you know, she's in the garden all the time. My younger, he's four, he's little. I know how helpful he would be.
Yeah, but he'd have a ball, so it's fun out there.
Speaking about efficiency, I don't know that that would necessarily help with efficiency.
Well, I just want to say thank you for, you know, for coming to volunteer on one of our boards. Thank you.
I would just say from the standpoint, I actually sit with both Beautification and Sampson Island Board. I can relate to you as far as having every, every other Friday off. I do that also as a contractor, and I can tell you, sometimes it just doesn't seem to fall on the right Friday from that standpoint. But both them and Sampson Island are great choices. People on the Sampson Island community are great. They're really interested, and when you talk about the plants and getting rid of invasive species and stuff like that, they're, they are really all about that. They love doing that, so that is a good board, so I'm happy to hear that you've got interest in both those. But I could, like I said, I would just tell you, probably from a convenience point of view, it would probably be easier on the Sampson Island, like I said, only because I know for the last couple of years, it's hard for me at times to hit that every other Friday just right when the meeting happens.
I understand.
No, I'm good. I'm glad he's applied. Thank you, sir.
Pete, thanks very much. Again, it's an agenda item. You're more than welcome to stay, and if you'd like her, we'll contact you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further business?
Yeah, I just have a question. On this application for the boards, we have a question. Do you hold public office? What's the purpose of that?
You've just been on there for.
I know, and so my question is, what purpose does it serve?
I know of none.
Does it interfere with the quasi-judicial aspect? I think that's why it's on there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe we'll ask Jim when he's here.
That is it.
That is what it is.
Okay. Any further business?
Nope.
Hearing none, meeting's adjourned. We'll take a couple-minute break and then start up.
Testing, one, two, three.
Testing, one, two, three. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, May 4th, 2016, approximately 7:10. Will you please join Councilman Montanaro for a prayer and a moment of silence? And a pledge, sorry.
Your Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to make decisions for our residents. Please watch over the family of the Navy SEAL who was killed yesterday. Please pray and watch out over our servicemen and women who are stationed all over the world, and please, please bring them home to their families safely. If you'll join me in the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dominic. Moving on to Agenda Item Three, Presentation of a Proclamation, recognizing May 7th, 2016 as National Explosive Ordnance Disposal Day. Thank you, Mayor. Are you having a gentleman in front here, please? Some of you may know, in my prior life before this, I was in the Air Force, and I was also an Explosive Ordnance Disposal Technician, and these are some of my brethren that actually come from Patrick Air Force Base in Cape Canaveral. I'll read the proclamation, and I'll just give you a little few statements afterwards about, to talk a little bit about the EOD career field. So it's an official proclamation from the City of Satellite Beach, Florida, where as the bomb-and-mine disposal profession was created in April 1941, and where as members of the explosive ordinance disposal organizations perform a dangerous and selfless task, often without recognition, risking their lives on behalf of the United States, and where as the United States will forever be in debt to their personal and in profession of explosive ordnance disposal for their bravery and sacrifice in times of peace and war. Whereas people of the United States should express their recognition and gratitude for members of the explosive ordnance disposal profession, and where as the City of Satellite Beach supports and encourages the community to observe their first Saturday in May as National Explosive Ordnance Disposal Day, and to honor those who are serving and have served the noble and self-sacrificing profession of explosive ordnance disposal in the United States Armed Forces. Now therefore, I, Frank Cattino, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach of Arakata, here to proclaim, May 7th, 2016, as National Explosive Ordnance Disposal Day. I want to pass that to you guys. You can take it out there to the shot.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Again, for, if you don't know what EOD is, EOD is like a military bomb squad. And many people, after they get out of military bomb squad, they go on to be a civilian bomb squad that's out there. They respond, for our guys here, they respond to some of the local bomb threats that we have. They served in the wars and the conflicts worldwide, and they support our space program here for every launch and some of the disasters we've had, such as Challenger and Columbia. Similar to the firefighter, you know, who always runs into the burning building, an EOD technician always walks towards and renders safe the bomber explosive devices that everybody else seems to run away from. EOD technicians don't have the luxury to turn down a mission or pass a task to somebody else. It is in my opinion that there is no more challenging and courageous occupational field across all the military services than that of the EOD technician. Initial success or total failure, that is the mantra that they live by. This year will be the 47th Explosive Ordnance Disposal Memorial Ceremony, which is held at the EOD Memorial at the Kaufman EOD Training Complex at Eglin Air Force Base, Florida. Actually, we'll be there, it's this Saturday morning. As the names of each service person who has fallen, they're read aloud, it is concluded with the phrase, "We remember." We remember. EOD technicians of all services make a solemn promise when they enter the EOD community that we will never forget. We will never forget those heroes, our EOD brothers and sisters who have gone before us, their bravery, their courage, and their ultimate sacrifice. Currently, right now, and just so everybody would have an idea, I have to put a picture of, that's what the EOD memorial looks like. Currently, there is 314 names on there. Each one of those stones is set up by service, and they'll be adding six more names this year. So I just wanted to recognize these guys, because to me, they are our local heroes. They do a lot for us here, and I appreciate you guys being here tonight.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, the second part of that, recognition of Emergency Medical Service Week, we're putting that till the 18th. Moving on to Agenda Item Four, which is Citizens Comments. For non-agenda items, the floor is open. Hearing none. Back to council, moving on to Agenda Item Five, City Council Comments.
The only thing I would add is I did attend the retirement there for Carrie. Job well done. Job well done. I think everybody had a great time. The place was set up excellent, and me and my two fellows that I was running around with, as you may have seen pictures, we all had a great time there, but it was a really, really great job. You guys did outstanding, and I think we had a good turnout there, and everybody else I talked to had a good time. That's all.
Who's the guy in the middle?
Thank you.
Just a few things. Just returned from the Department of Health Reorganization meeting of the Florida Injury Prevention Advisory Council. There's been a lot of changes in the Department of Health, enormous numbers of worker reduction up there, and they are trying to figure out ways to keep the community involved, especially in fall prevention and a number of other initiatives. The reorganization is still going on. I'm not exactly what will come out of it, I don't know. I know fall prevention is on the DOH by statute, so it won't go away, but it just certainly is not, doesn't have the funding that it used to have a number of years ago. Second thing is I did also attend the event by, for Carrie, that was very nicely done, guys. It was, it was very, very well-done, well-attended, I had a lot of fun. I did see Carrie today at the post office, and she looks about three inches taller now, so, but she's doing really well. On Saturday, I attended the Indian Liver, Indian Liver, Indian River Lagoon Regional Compact Signature on your behalf, Mr. Mayor. It was well-attended. They even had the President of the Florida League of Cities there, and big turnout as far as elected officials and that sort of thing. And Satellite Beach was the first one to sign, so I was, they got, said, "How about Satellite Beach Start?", and they handed me the thing, so I signed it, so we're number one on the signature list on your behalf. The other thing is, is, and I will pass this, pass this down, this is our copy of everything, goes down to Courtney. Courtney, Stu Glass would like to have you contact him. He has some ideas for communities for a lifetime with the EMTs and their lagoon celebration that he would like to discuss with you. I'm not really sure what it was, or I'd be more specific, but I asked if he could speak with you and vice versa and that sort of thing. But anyhow, well done on the lagoon efforts, and I hope that, I hope that we'll see some progress out of that. But that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I was also at Carrie's retirement, and I had my picture taken with you two guys. Have you seen it?
Adam has it. Adam took that one.
Thanks.
We would have known who was in the middle on that one.
You sure would. As I filled out the city manager's evaluation form and answered some variation of the same question three and four times, it occurred to me that this form needs to be redone. So I'm going to draft a different version of this and present it to you all for your comments and input, and we can come up with a less repetitious evaluation. Do you know when our website will be up and running, the new one?
I know. We haven't even started programming it yet, so they're, they're doing like surveys and stuff like that, so you're looking at at least six months.
I'd love to see that done this year, completed. It's important. And I want to talk about the Sustainability Board. I don't recall ever seeing a board that has had such popular reaction as that board. And I hate having really well-qualified people come in here and apply, and you can't come on it because it's full. So I want to propose something at the next meeting or whenever, in terms of expanding the membership in that board in some fashion. I just don't, I don't think we can afford to waste the kind of talent that's coming to us and asking to participate in that board.
No, it's interesting who we've got. There's only one person that I'm aware on that board who has participated in other boards in the city. It's a lot of new faces and new people that move in the community, which I think is great. You know, we have some people on there who are advisors to it, and I'm not so sure how big that, I mean, I guess the board can be as big as you want it, but we always got to make sure it has that odd number to it. But we are getting a lot of play in it, and other cities are, too, and I'll say that when my turns up, but, you know.
I'll make a proposal to the council at an upcoming meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
I attended on the 20th, Delora's Principal Bobby Pruitt had a meeting, it was a community meeting, to pretty much go over what happened to Delora this year, what they're looking at doing next year, and it was pretty well-attended. Frank Gerton from Indian Harbor Beach was there along with Dave Butler, their police chief. Jeff Pearson, our police chief, was there. Kendall Nippel was there. David Schechter was there. Suzanne Summers was there. So it was, it was a well-attended meeting, and there's a lot of stuff going on at Delora. I also attended the Surfside ribbon cutting for the new playground equipment that the city donated to Surfside, and that was really great, because there were a lot of kids over there. They actually tied it into a barbecue that Saturday, and the playground was getting use. On the 26th, I attended the Code Enforcement Board meeting, and Richard Ralph, who was the chairman of that board, and I believe was on that board when I was on that board a long, long time ago, he's got probably 20 years of service on that board, and I wanted to bring up to council that we probably should do something, at least in recognizing his time of service. his time of service, and maybe look at some of the other boards that we have, that we have people that have that type of tenure, and at least recognize the fact that they have served our city for that number of years. But Richard's done a great job, he took over as chair of that board after Alan Lindsay, and Alan Lindsay was the chairman of that board from its inception, so he's done a great job for us, and that's all I have.
Thank you. We had our first town hall meeting, I think it went well, we had a fairly nice attendance there, people asked a lot of good questions, and I think staff prepared good topics to talk about, and our next one, I believe, is the 11th of May, and I think that turned out good. Sustainability, talking about it, I, we are very much way ahead of the curve. I attended a workshop last night in Cocoa Beach, and they are trying to set up their sustainability board. It's interesting, sustainability means a little bit different to each area, they were more interested in the lagoon until I made the presentation of what we thought sustainability was, where we went with it, and how it did tie into the lagoon, but it was more. So they're very interested in the city itself working with the City of Satellite Beach on a number of issues, not only sustainability and seeing what we accomplish and how we've done it, but they approached me that, would we kind of be like sister cities and do things together? So I, I think it was a good meeting that way, and it's interesting now how the beachside cities are starting to, you know, work together. But it was good, they're doing a sustainability board, so, and that's all I have to say.
I would just like to say, you know, that is a good thing with Cocoa Beach, you know, that what we're doing with the P4 in Patrick, which is really who's between us, that really puts up a really nice, you know, coalition and group together that have a lot of things in common, and as we, as again, as we know that Patrick has been talking to us, and we talked about the sidewalk and all that stuff going down there, so I think that would be really great, you know, if you talk about Satellite Beach, Patrick, and Cocoa Beach, all in a row, we probably do share a lot of things in common and have a lot of ideas we could exchange back and forth.
Well, it was interesting, because a couple days ago, we had lunch with Colonel Wallace, and definitely I told him about you, so don't worry. But it was something that he brought up, he says, "We need to do this," and the general said he wants to be part of it, to do these every couple months, luncheons, and discuss what we can do together. And one of the things he brought up to us was an idea for south housing that he's going to make a presentation to us about. So I think we made a really good connection with the base and Cocoa Beach to our north to do things, so.
When you say "south housing," are you talking 100 acres?
Well, that's still...
Are you talking their south house?
Their south house.
Our, our south housing, where they have their military housing on our south, but not the 110 acres really didn't come up, other than, let me put this, there seems to be even a disconnect between Hunt Pinnacle and the military, because his question to us was, "What do you mean, someone put in an offer?" He says, "I'm supposed to get every offer that comes through." Okay? And that kind of, again, we've been working on this for a long time, but he goes, "They can't do anything until it comes across my desk." And he had not seen anything, so I think the disconnect is, in general, still out there, even with them and Hunt Pinnacle, and we know us with Hunt Pinnacle, so, but, but it was a good meeting with them.
I have one other thing, too, the Delora's meeting, Cassie was also there. I forgot to mention her name, but she was there also.
Thank you. Any further council comments? Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 6, City Managers Report, Courtney.
Thank you, Mayor. On May 15th, 2016, obviously, the city's Dance Studio Rhythm in Motion will be holding the annual dance recital at O'Gally High School Auditorium at 2, so if anyone wants to attend that, you can get tickets at the Rec Department. And really pointing this out, because if you have any doubt that the Rec Department staff works hard, they will be at the dance recital all weekend long. That's what they do on the weekends when we're doing, enjoying ourselves, they're at events constantly throughout the entire year, pretty much.
Can you also get tickets at the door?
I don't think so.
I'm not sure they have any tickets left.
Oh, really? They're probably out already?
Yeah.
Good.
I also wanted to mention that this Saturday, at 10 o'clock at the Civic Center, Sally Scolero with UF Extension Service will be giving a presentation on how you can use the soils in your yard and native landscaping to improve the condition of the Indian River Lagoon. So that, this will be the second presentation that they've had, we did one Tuesday night last week, she also brought some plants and did a little raffle to auction off some of them, so we were working with Main Street natives, or Maple Street natives, to get some more plants for this Saturday, as kind of like an incentive and little giveaway to, to people to get them at the workshops. I also wanted to make sure that you were aware that the county for the Indian River Lagoon Compact did vote to support the compact, and, and I believe President Stu Glass of the League of Cities, or Space Coast League of Cities, sent out the minutes to that. The, the lunch with Colonel Wallace also, I just wanted to let you know that we were trying to convince him to provide us some of the old military, some of the softball fields that they don't really use anymore, to let us use that land for a community garden. That's an initiative of the Sustainability Board, so we're still working on that, because they still kind of use the fields a little bit, but they have three baseball fields that they kind of use, and I was trying to make the point that if you let us run your leagues, we could probably have used one baseball field for all of the things, if it was scheduled correctly, and, and, you know, use the other ones for something more, more productive. But we're working on it, so, so we'll get with you on that. And then I also was going to be drafting a letter for your next council meeting for the mayor, to support them in their argument with DOT on the speed limit of A1A over there. They, they have asked DOT to reduce the speed limit there, because they do, we're working on the sidewalk with them on the east side of A1A, and part of that, when you have a lot of pedestrians and cyclists who try to pull down the speed a little bit, and DOT said, "Well, it doesn't warrant," but actually, what it really warrants is a 60 mile an hour speed limit. So, so now we're going to, we're going to try to work with them and, you know, help, support them in that, in that argument. I do have in your, in the, in your report, in your packet, the information I received from Florida Power and Light outlining their proposed rate increase that they will be asking the Public Utilities Commission for in the next month. These rate increases are, from what they presented to me, a result of, they want to recoup some of the capital costs that they've expended in plant conversions to the natural gas plants, and then they also, apparently, in the past six, seven years, they, the Public Utilities Commission basically moved the rate structure to be more arduous for the residents and less arduous for the businesses, primarily to support the commercial sector during the recession. And the FPL is coming back to make that equal. It's good for the residents, and certainly us personally, but for the city, we're considered a commercial business, so that would be a, a good jump for us in the first year of the increase. In your packet, you'll see the table, the last table, where it has a City of Satellite Beach bill breakdown, and you'll see the, the, the increase in our revenues for the utility tax, which is a good thing, but then our electric bill would be going up as well, so, so there's, it's kind of almost like a, a little bit of a wash there. There is a meeting for, with the Public Utilities Commission, they will be having their meeting to get input from the public on these rate increases on June 16th, at 9:30 a.m. at the Brevard County Complex, Building C in Viera. So if anyone's interested in that process, that is a public meeting for them to, to hear from the public regarding the rate increases. I, I did have a complimentary letter from a resident regarding our Public Works Department, or our Public Works Director specifically, and I have included that in your packet. I also have received another letter that I'd like to read to you, because I think it highlights some of your initiatives regarding the business community, and I wanted to, you know, to, to basically show that we've been working on that pretty diligently, and this letter is from DeKan Diego's, and it's dated May 3rd, 2016. "To our elected leaders of Satellite Beach, recently during a routine fire inspection, it was brought to my attention that the thatching on my tiki umbrella roofs were getting close to needing a retreatment of fire retardant. As I started to examine my tikes, not only did I agree with Robert Grant, our inspector, but I also thought it was time to redo my tikes altogether. While the existing tikes I had on my deck in guest areas provide a decent shade for two-thirds of each day, my business would suffer during our rainy day, rainy times, due to a lack of adequate coverage. I went to our Building and Zoning Department to speak with Mr. Stone about what my options might be if I combined four of my tikes into one continuous tiki over my deck, thereby helping my business during our rainy and extremely hot days. Instead of instantly quoting me all the reasons my idea couldn't or wouldn't work, given some of the tight parameters of our redevelopment dictates, he thoughtfully emphasized with my predicament, and to my surprise, asked if he could look into a solution that could satisfy both our city and my business. Wow. Please understand that I appreciate the time and efforts that mostly all of our city officials and planners pour into making our city the best. I mean no offense to anyone who has served in the past, but wow. I actually felt a sense of encouragement and appreciation for being a longstanding business owner in Satellite Beach. That being said, Mr. Stone was true to his word and did go to work on a solution with the help of our city manager, Ms. Barker. Between the two, they proposed a very challenging, but also a very welcomed and reasoned approach to help me bridge a longstanding problem for my establishment. I would like to formally thank Mr. Stone and Ms. Barker for working so hard to help me accomplish a goal I've had for over 10 years. I'm so impressed to see a tangible sense of pride and determination in helping our city any way they can. I would also like to thank, to formally thank Fire Commander Dave Abernathy for his time, patience, and thoughtful guidance from the start to the end of this project. His willingness to be on hand at seemingly a moment's notice was truly astounding and appreciated. As a resident whose children go to Surfside Elementary and Delora Middle School and a business owner for close to 20 years here in Satellite Beach, I have seen many changes through the years and a buzz through my ears. I thought you should know that the buzz I've been hearing about, coupled with my first, my recent firsthand experience with our city professionals, has been nothing short of what every city should strive for, positive and proactive. Wow. Scott Brysonson, owner, DeKan Diego.
John, thank you.
Courtney, John.
Thank you. Good job.
So I just thought, you know, as a council priority of, you know, outreach to our business community, improving relationships, I think that's a good example of the efforts that we've been working on, and, and trying to change from a culture unknown to a helpful and responsive attitude.
Good to hear.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to comment, that was a wonderful letter about Alan Potter, it's so typical of the kind of work he does, and I want to thank Joey and Regan for taking the time to write that really nice letter, it was terrific, thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 7, I'll open up a public hearing, discuss, take action on ordinance 1113, Jim.
Ordinance number 1113, excuse me. In accordance to the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the infrastructure, coastal management conservation, intergovernmental coordination, and capital improvements elements of the 1998 Conference of Plan, as amended September 2nd, 2015, based on the city's updated data and analysis of the Conference of Plan. Revising and update, updating existing goals, objectives, and policies in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes. Authorizing transmittal of these amendments to the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, State Land Planning Agency, and other applicable agencies for review and comment as required by Florida statutes. Providing a conflicts clause and severability clause providing effective date, it's the second reading of ordinance number 1113.
Thank you. Questions, council?
Yeah, I, excuse me, I'm kind of here. Mr. Leroux, I had a couple of questions on this ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
If you go to, one, two, three, four, the fifth whereas, it says, the City of Satellite Beach pursuant to Florida statutes, and the city charter, and the LDRs, I don't believe that the LDRs designate the CPAB as the local planning agency. The Florida statutes address the local planning agency, and our city charter addresses it.
Yes, ma'am, you're correct, the LDR repeats that, though, I think somewhere, that's probably where we, where we get that, but you're right, the state, the state statutes talk about the, the local planning agency, and then your, your local government then picks who it is. Now, I think the reason it's in there is because the LDRs probably track it in one of the, one of the chapters.
Well, I'd like to delete that, and the City of Satellite Beach Land Development Regulations.
Okay.
It's not really the authority, but the Florida statutes and the charter are.
Okay.
And then, is there any particular reason why in the succeeding whereases, you referred to the CPAB as the local planning agency instead of as the CPAB?
No, we, we could certainly say it that way.
I, I'd like to see that changed.
Because it is designated as, or acting as a local planning agency.
Yes, and so in the, in the sixth and the seventh, whereas, if it could change, city's local planning agency reference to the Conference of Planning Advisory Board. And the reason all of this came up in my mind was because of the changes that we're making to our city charter, and I know that's not related to this, but it did set up a red flag, and that's this. When I went back to see what the recommended, proposed changes to the charter are, it completely dropped that reference to the local planning agency. So that needs to go back in there. Yeah, it does, and I'll tell you why. The reason it was put in the charter in the first place was because of this Florida statutory requirement that there be a local planning agency, and no one could ever remember which board or committee was the local planning agency. That's why it was put into the charter, and it needs to stay in there for clarification. And it, it, it's a very simple change, which basically just picks up the language that's already in there, acting as the local planning agency, it pairs the conference plan. But that, that needs to stay in there, because having it like that avoids a lot of confusion. So, and I wanted to ask you, on the last whereas on the second page, is that provision necessary in this ordinance? Because I always find it strange to be voting on something that hasn't occurred yet, and saying that it has occurred.
I think we do need to have that.
Yeah, you have to have it, the ordinance is as much for DCA as it is for us.
Okay.
DEO.
Or DEO, I'm sorry, dating myself.
I know, you're, that's all right. Now, that's the reason it is in every other instance.
Okay, and then on goal one, where we are adding the words "and city initiated adaptation action areas, triple A's," please appease me and hyphenate "city initiated."
Please.
I'm sorry, where was that?
It's in Jim's letter.
One change we're making.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you can see it in my memo, it's the easiest place to get it.
City hyphen initiated.
Okay.
And then we will track that in the actual language of the policy as well.
Lorraine, can you just clarify for me, on the fifth whereas, it's going to now read, "The city has reviewed the proposed amendments to the..." "The city has reviewed the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan, and said proposed amendments were reviewed..."
I'm sorry.
We're taking out...
The sixth.
And on the sixth whereas, it's going to read, "And the said proposed amendments were reviewed by the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board at a duly advertised meeting."
That's correct.
Okay.
And then in the next whereas...
It's going to read CPAB instead of local planning agency.
That's incorrect.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance number 1113 with the proposed changes.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. Further questions? I do to Jim. Jim, are you, are these changes okay to you?
Yeah, changes are fine.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. This time, open up for public comment on Ordinance 1113. Here and none. Close public comment. Bring it back to Council. Any further counsel?
I just want to say again, thank you for the time that you and the CPAB have spent on all of these changes, and, you know, it's just amazing the things that we get done. And we have great people working on this stuff, so thank you.
A little kudos to the East Central Planning Council for doing all the hard, heavy lifting, and all we did is kind of move it in that direction, and it was a team effort, so we thank you. But it is nice to have compliments from the state agency, so we'll take it and be quiet and go away. Thank you.
Further questions? Here and none. Lenore?
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cottino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Number 8. Discuss, take action on Ordinance 1116. Jim?
Ordinance number 1116. In accordance to the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the Satellite Beach Personnel Policy Section 12.01, Job Classification Levels, to add job classification for full-time special events and volunteer coordinator and salary range. Providing an effective date. It's the second reading of Ordinance number 1116.
Motion to approve on second reading. Second? I have a motion by Councilman, Vice Mayor Brian Mercutney, second by Councilman Montanaro. Questions from Council? Here and none. This time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 8. Here and none. Close the public comment. Back to Council. Any further counsel? Lenore?
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cottino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Cassie.
Great job again.
First one, thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 9. Discuss, take action on Ordinance 1118. Jim?
Ordinance number 1118. In accordance to the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the FY 2015-2016 Budget Ordinance number 1110, providing an effective date. It's the second reading of Ordinance number 1118.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Before we do that, there may be some changes on this.
Okay. Comments? Okay, I'll take Council comments.
In this summary of these sections of the different funds that have been changed, at the very end of the material we've been given, is the Health Insurance Fund, which just kind of crops up, and it's not mentioned anyplace else. And I'm wondering what it is and why it's here.
On page 79.
Seventy-eight and seventy-nine.
The Health Insurance Fund, that's when we switch to a partially self-insured plan, so that's part of our budget?
Part of what budget?
Our budget, our city budget. Maybe I misunderstood your question.
We talk about General Fund, Community Services Fund, Stormwater Utility Fund, Law Enforcement Trust Fund, Community Redevelopment Trust Fund, and Capital Assets Fund, and that's all that's addressed in this ordinance. When I look through this material...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
...I find that we also have a Health Insurance Fund that is not addressed here.
Was there any changes to it?
Yeah. So the ordinance...
In the middle line, I'm forgetting the last, the over... You need to come talk into a microphone.
Okay, I see what you're saying. The individual line items for the Health Insurance Fund may have changed, but the overall total amount did not. So there was no reason to put that in the ordinance.
Well, when there's no, we've got two, the Stormwater Utility Fund and the Law Enforcement Trust Fund, that says here there are no changes. So why have we omitted the Health Insurance Fund?
Yeah, that's a good point. So that should be part, that should say that, so the City Council of Satellite Beach does not hereby adopt any changes with respect to the Health Insurance Fund. That sentence should be in the ordinance.
So that was then...
So that's section seven.
Section seven.
And then move the rest down.
And then seven becomes eight, and eight becomes nine, and nine becomes ten, and ten becomes eleven.
Or it was not a Health Insurance Fund. You need to talk into a microphone.
If you please come up and come up to the podium. Thank you.
The reason why it was left out is because it's a different type of fund. It's an Internal Service Fund, which is not a special revenue fund or a, the general fund, obviously. And the other reason was because there was no total change to the fund itself. One way to remedy this, the sentence not mentioned in the ordinance, is to not amend that portion of the budget.
I think we should just add it to the ordinance, so...
As section seven?
Yeah.
Yeah, be easy.
And the language, the language when we add it would be that, "does not hereby adopt any changes with respect to the Health Insurance Trust Fund."
Yeah.
Motion amended.
Health Insurance Fund, not...
Health Insurance Fund. And that would become seven, right?
Yep.
And when we get these in the future, I found it very difficult to understand what was going on with this material, and it was a lot of it. We need some kind of a summary of what the changes are in the staff report, first of all. And then, when you get to these actual budget documents, we need the line items that are affected to be done and read. I sat here and I wasted my time trying to search for clues as to where the changes were, and that shouldn't be necessary. And the thing that I, I know that folks who work in finance with budgets and numbers, they tend to become insular and think that they're just working for the number crunchers, especially regarding our budget. We need to make sure that we are presenting information so that our residents can understand it, because ultimately, that's who we're writing for. And so it needs to be laid out clearly. And so, any changes in any line item, the whole line needs to be put in red so that it jumps out to the reader.
Okay.
I agree with her on that. I, you know, I think the easier we can make it for people looking at this, and the summary would really make it easier for us as a council and for anybody looking at this thing.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, and do I, who was the second?
Two are, two are proven amended.
Yes.
That's what he said.
You need to change on your second. That change hasn't been made. Whoever made the second's got to approve it.
Hasn't made the second? I don't think anybody did.
I don't think anybody did.
You talked about it and then...
Yeah, I...
I'll second the motion with the appropriate changes.
Stop. We got a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer, we got a second by Councilman McGaw. Okay.
Yes.
Any further questions before I open up the public? At this time, open up Agenda Item 9 for public comment. Here and none. Back to Council. Courtney, you guys, I think you could work on this. I think you get the idea of how to say it's fine. Any further discussion? Here and none. Lenore?
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cottino?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 10. Discuss, take action on agreement between the City of Satellite Beach, Surfline, Wavetrack, Inc., for surf webcam.
Good evening. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is basically an agreement between us and Surfline, Wavetrack, Inc., to place surf cams at most of our beach accesses in our parks. And this was, we were basically approached in January of this year with a proposal to do this. We did work with our attorney, city attorney, to, you know, basically massage this agreement to make it fit our purchasing laws and our, any concerns that we have. And basically, it really is no cost to the city, but we would get the benefit, our public would get the benefit of being able to check this website and get basically live feed of the surf, right?
Yes.
And we also, they also have a lot of data, too, that we can access, sometimes for emergency purposes, emergency management purposes. So we kind of went through all that with them in a meeting, and so to us, it's a good service. It doesn't really impact us at all financially. And, you know, so we're recommending approval for the agreement.
Quick question on it. Jim, have you looked over the agreement?
Yes.
Is it?
Yes.
Thank you. Comments from Council?
I have questions.
Okay.
First of all, I think this is a really cool idea. But I got confused in here. There are multiple references to access to the Dune Crossovers and any other locations identified in Exhibit A. So I couldn't tell where the webcam is going to be going. Is it going to be going at Dune Crossovers, or is it going to be going at just Hightower and Pelican? I couldn't tell by this agreement.
Yes, right now, the sites that are up for approval are Pelican and Hightower. And where the cam will be placed, there's already an existing pole at Pelican, so it will replace the existing camera there. And I believe a pole is going to be installed at Hightower, similar to Pelican, at which the cam will be placed on. And then, in your main structure, at the Mark Realty or the Clubhouse at Pelican, is where the wireless transmission will go and the base station, you know, a router will be housed.
So why do we have all these references to Dune Crossovers in here?
I'm not 100% sure. I have...
Basically, when this agreement was originally presented, there was no consensus on where these cameras were going to go.
You need to talk into a microphone.
There were, at the time that this agreement was originally presented, there was no consensus on where the cameras were going to go. They were talking about Dune Crossovers, they were talking about where they are now. There was to be a meeting to work this out between the city and the representatives of the business, and that's why that, that's the language that was in there. And then when the original, when the, when this agreement came through, there were only two sites. Originally, I believe it was going to be six sites. But the idea, I believe, is, is that there may be more sites, and that could be at one of the Dune Crossovers. But originally, that language, that language is in from the original draft that was here because that was one of the contemplated locations for the camera, was at a Dune Crossover.
Question real quick on that. So there could be more cams if it's warranted?
Yes, yes, and I believe those would be approved of on an individual basis.
Okay, and, well, but then this agreement here, the way it's written, would allow for that to occur?
We would just amend it and add it to the exhibit.
Right, okay.
Well, then, why do we keep the references to the Dune Crossovers? As an attorney, this bothers me.
The idea is, is they can add them in the future, and basically, all they're going to do is come back and amend an exhibit. Is it additional language that's not relevant to what's in here right now? I would agree with you. I'm just saying that was the way that the agreement was originally presented, and Exhibit A has now come back, and there's only two places where it is.
So what?
If you want to, if you want to delete the reference to Dune Crossovers, I don't have any problem with it. The issue would be you'd have to amend the language of the agreement if they come back and they put a camera to Dune Crossover as opposed to just amending the exhibit.
Why?
Why what?
Why would you have to, why couldn't you just amend the exhibit if you add a Dune Crossover? Because you've already said that you'd have to...
That's what we were...
...amend the exhibit if you're going to add a Dune Crossover anyhow, so...
That's what we were saying, is like, I would rather keep that language in here because we, if we add cameras down the road, then all we have to do is add an exhibit to this agreement. And I would say that, you know, the locations of Pelican and Hightower can all be considered Dune Crossovers, too. So it's all encompassing language.
I understand. I think leaving it there is best, and then as more cameras become needed or wanted by the surfing community or whomever, then therefore, all they have to do is submit that to us for location only.
Just, like you said, just the exhibit, that's all there is to it.
Okay. The link to Surfline from the city shall provide a live 30-second video stream from one or more of the webcams listed in Exhibit A. Well, there are only two, so how many are we having?
Then again, let you add more as a timeline.
Right now, the way I read this is there's two. But the way it's written is we could have more when they would bring that to it, and it would be added to the exhibit without having to change the rest of the language of the agreement. Because they would be put at most of the beach crossovers, if it was the soda...
Where you have a park.
Correct.
You know, where the city has a park.
But I think your intent is up to, right now, is up to a maximum of six, is that right?
I believe I identified six locations at which the city has parks and infrastructure that you can base one yet.
Okay.
I believe that that line, as far as the one or more cams, may be where we can provide a feed for a cam on the satellite beach site, on the city site. So you can also have a portion of a cam there, and it could be from one or more of the cams. This may be how the wording is referencing that line.
Shouldn't, shouldn't that be Exhibit B? Because Exhibit A doesn't say where they're going to be, Exhibit B does.
Where is Exhibit B?
Well, it says, what you just looked at for 4.1, it says one or more webcams listed in Exhibit A. The webcams are actually listed in B, not in A.
No, Exhibit A, the pictures.
Where are you looking at 4.1?
She looked at 4.1 right here.
Did we provide a link?
Exhibit B?
Just continue.
Is this Exhibit A, and is this Exhibit B? It's confusing. Where is Exhibit A?
Right here.
Exhibits are in the back.
All right, okay.
Okay. It's confusing.
It is confusing. If I were the lawyer in charge of this, this thing would have been tightened up. I'm bothered in 2.3 by our second half of the third line, including without limitation, lost profits. I didn't know we were working for profit. And from a political standpoint, I don't like that being in there because that gives people looking for an issue to stir up a false issue, something to latch on to. Politically, it's not smart to have that in there. And I also have never seen in a contract a statement that says, "States do not allow the exclusion or limitation of liability for incidental or consequential damages, so the above limitations may not apply to you." may not apply to you."
If I may, basically, many of these agreements that are presented, I respond to the format that is provided. The, I don't have as much control as sometimes council believes that I have as far as rewriting their contracts. The idea was, is that this issue was provided to staff as something for the city to try. If council is not happy with this contract, I will go back to the provider, because there are provisions in here that I don't agree with either, as a whole. But in working with, or excuse me, in negotiating the contract, some provisions were left in that the provider wanted to have in here, and other ones were negotiated out. If council wants to direct us, if council wants to direct me to draft the contract the way that I believe that it should be drafted, every time a contract comes up, then I will be more than happy to do that. But the idea is, is that we're negotiating a contract with a provider, and they want some provisions in here for what they perceive is for their protection. And most of the changes that we asked for were put in here. But again, if that's what council wants, then I don't have any problem doing that.
Can I butt in here? I would not do that, because we have, you know, we wouldn't get anything done. I mean, we had, this, when we call it negotiation, that is a negotiation. That's, there are some things that we may not 100% like, but if we don't take that, then we're not going to get the service. I mean, so I think we need to be careful with that, you know? And I mean, so, yes, there may be sections that don't completely comply, but that's their format that they want to use.
I fully understand that. I understand contract negotiations very well. I also understand how to write a contract, and I also understand that the city attorney's responsibility is to protect the city. Having said that, is 2.3, is that language in there that I'm bothered by? Sir, is that something that was discussed with you, and you wanted to keep it in there?
The contract negotiations were between the head of the cam team and our company attorney. So as far as the actual breakdown of the contract, yes, I'm.
The question for here, there's no money involved here. Is there? So basically, what it looks like they are looking for is that they have no liability for us or a party that would make money, or if their camera went out, would lose money, and therefore, they would be liable. They're putting up cameras. And we're providing power, their services, the cameras, so we can see the beach for whether it's emergency reasons, or the surf, kids can look at the surf, whatever. I'm not sure that, either way, this means very much, because it's not a monetary agreement.
Let me take that question a little further. Jim, based on her comments about 2.1, is there anything of material nature in there that we need to be concerned about at this time? If so, please state it. If not, let's move on. But I want to rely on your opinion as to whether those are material issues.
Do you mean 2.3?
Yeah, 2.3, I'm sorry, 2.3. And if they're not, just say they're not material issues. Based on what Frank just said, nobody's making any money off this.
I mean, based on the nature of this contract, I don't believe there's a problem, mainly because, again, just because that's what it is. I mean, the idea is, is that we can't get consequential damages against them for something that happened. That's basically what this is, that's what that paragraph's about.
Okay, thank you.
And is it the other way around, where they can't get damages from us also?
Yes.
Jim?
I mean, is this here to protect them, or to protect us, or to protect both parties?
That's to protect them. Basically, there's two types of damages. One is, is consequential damages, and one is the damages that result from the direct breach of the contract. And they're basically saying that if we, if there's any damages, and basically, our damages are limited to what results as a breach of the contract. And that's what that paragraph's for.
Which is zero, correct?
I don't know how we're going to have any, I don't know how we're going to get consequential damages anyway.
Right.
Do you have a motion yet?
I haven't.
Okay, I'll move that we authorize the city manager to assign this agreement with Surfline, Wave Track, Inc., for surf webcams.
I have a motion by Councilwoman McGaw. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Councilman Osmer. Further discussion? Here are none. Open up for public comment Agenda Item 10. Bring it back to council. Further discussion?
You know, when we built both parks, we put the conduit in, we made arrangements for this type of service, and I think it's great that we're at that point now where we're going to be putting it in. You know, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't understand the, all the implications of the contract here. And I think all we were looking at doing is making sure that we dotted our i's and crossed our t's, and if Jim is comfortable with it, I'm okay with it.
Further comment? Here in Lenore.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Appreciate it. When will they be up in?
Always from the time the contract's signed, within 30 to 60 days.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 11, Discuss Take Action on Agreement Between the City of Satellite Beach and TD Bank for Banking Services.
Thank you, Mayor. We are asking for your authorization to allow the mayor to sign the certificate of resolution and to allow me to sign the agreement for banking services with TD Bank. On October 8, 2015, you issued a request for proposals, to solicit proposals from qualified financial institutions to provide banking services to the city. So basically, what we wanted to do is, is to make sure that we can keep those services competitively bid. We put that out to RFP, and we ultimately chose TD Bank to provide that service. The savings that we are looking at are an 89% reduction in monthly fees to the city. And it did take a while to negotiate this agreement. We are hoping that you approve it today. This will start the beginning of the process of moving all of our accounts over to TD Bank.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, town, you got it.
A motion to authorize the mayor to sign the certificate of resolution, and the city manager to sign the agreement for banking services with TD Bank.
A motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Discussion from council.
Yeah. I would just, Courtney, this was a terrific idea to go out for this, the 89% reduction in monthly fees is better established. So good work.
Further discussion? At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 11. Here are none. Back to council. Further comment? Here in Lenore.
Councilman McGaw?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Great job, thank you. Great savings. Looking forward to working with them. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, Discuss Take Action on Adding Veterans Day as a City Holiday. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff is requesting your approval to add Veterans Day as a city holiday. Previously, Councilwoman McGaw had actually asked the city to move forward in making this holiday, an official city holiday. We have created a letter to the unions. Anytime we change, anything that can affect our contracts, we have to send them letters and make sure that they're okay with it. Obviously, they're okay with it. But it would basically increase our costs for holiday pay for our public safety employees by $7,981. If approved, this would be included in the 2016-2017 budget. Staff sees no problem in doing that, or in being able to fund that. So therefore, we are recommending your approval to add Veterans Day to our city holiday. I did want to comment, too, is that most other places are closed. The counties closed, most other cities are closed. And that makes it very difficult to do business during that time, because we can't communicate with anyone else. The other issue is that we work right next to Patrick Air Force Base, and not to be closed on that holiday kind of sends a message, in our opinion. So we would recommend that we approve this. We think it serves, it sends a good message to our community, and we don't see any problem with the funding, again, for the holiday pay.
Great, thank you very much. Comment, Mark?
Just one question, Courtney, and I probably should have called you earlier about it. Does your figure of 7,981, would that figure also any overtime that happened to come, or time and a half for any of our police fire, that sort of thing?
Actually, the holiday pay is to prevent overtime.
Okay.
So the, it basically pays them instead of, instead of making them work overtime. So if we didn't do holiday pay, and we paid them overtime, it would actually cost more.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. Yeah, that makes sense. I should have called you earlier, sorry about that.
Any further?
I think we have veterans that work for our city, and I think this is just a no-brainer. So I would make a motion to approve the addition of Veterans Day as a city holiday.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman McGaw. Councilwoman McGaw, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I would just want to say that, especially in light of the area that we live in, where there are so many military folks, both active duty, retired, and veterans, this is simply the right thing to do.
Only one thing I want to say, Lorraine, is thank you. Good idea. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Further comments? Open up for public comment Agenda Item 12. Here are none. Back to council. Any further? Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman McGaw?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Good job, city. Thank you, Lorraine, for bringing it up. Courtney, thank you for putting it together for us. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, which is our agenda for the May 18 meeting. Any additions to that? Please see, Courtney. Moving on to Agenda Item 14, Appointments to Boards.
I'll make a motion to appoint David Floyd to the Sustainability Committee as a Sustainability Board as a regular member.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Breimer.
Yeah.
Discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes.
I'll make a.
I want to move to reappoint Dale Howlett to DAB as a primary member.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilwoman McGaw, second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Peter Rogers to the Sampson's Island Working Board.
Second. Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Discussion?
Yeah, he's, he's the one that was, that would be so good, also for the Sustainability Board. You know, maybe at some point, we want to give these folks options.
I think, you know, too, I think there was a few other people that, a couple meetings ago, there was a gentleman we put on another board, but his first pick was that. So if we are going to look at that board, I think, too, we got to look at it to say, is there's that much work going on? Is, how big do we want to make that board? How big is it the board needs to be before it becomes?
Too big.
If it's too cumbersome, and make sure we have that right number. Because it's a great board. There's some really great people on it. And I think the gentleman Dylan, who's an advisor on it, is just amazing what he's doing. So, yeah, I think we just, maybe we can go back and, Lenore, and find that list of people that said sustainability, but we didn't give it to them, and just see where that's at.
Sounds good.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Lenore?
Councilman McGaw?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes.
One, can I just say, Dale Howlett is another one of those people like Richard Ralph, who's been on that board for a long time. And as I said before, I think we need to kind of identify who these people are that have served us for those kind of periods of time. Leslie Castaldi on the Board of Adjustment is another one.
One of the things that, well, we were actually planning on bringing Richard Ralph into council to recognize him. That was actually on our agenda. We're trying to schedule that with him now. But one of the things that we have been talking about among staff is, you know, we recognize, like the police department recognizes their volunteers, but we don't really do that on our board. So I've seen some cities that actually have luncheons for their volunteer board members every year, like an appreciation event. So that, we could work on that, if that's something you all see. And then at that event, that's when you would recognize the really long-term members, and, you know, provide them with any of the certificates or awards that you want to do. So that, and then, in we, in my previous position in Titusville, we had that, and each of the staff liaisons would come up and introduce the board, talk about what they've done, some of the major accomplishments of the year, you know, things like that, their major activities, and then, you know, introduce all the board members, and you'd have a nice lunch with everyone. It was a nice event. And everybody, all the staff members, we all really looked forward to it, because, you know, we get kind of close to your board members over the years. So it's a nice, so if that's something you all want to look into, we can certainly.
We used to do an annual picnic for our volunteers.
Well, Courtney, I think you'd probably get consensus here. You just do some research and then work that out, come up with some different options and some things for us.
Yeah.
Man, I think that's a good idea. I mean, you know, we've had times where we're a little slim on volunteers for boards. So we do want to make them feel very appreciative for volunteering their time to come do this on our board. So you're right, I think we should acknowledge and say, hey, we really thank you for that, and we acknowledge it, we see what you're doing, you know, to help encourage people to continue to do that, that it's not gone, you know, unseen.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to.
Mayor Patino, could I ask one quick question, though? You're talking about the luncheon, but what about those that have served and are going off the board?
Well, what I'd like to do is, on that, is have, we're directing, Courtney, okay, but we're directing, Courtney, to look into that and come up with a proposal to us. Moving on to Agenda Item 15, Minutes, Approval Minutes. Motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 2016 meeting.
As submitted?
As submitted.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Councilman Osmer, second by Councilman Montanaro.
That's for the special meeting and regular meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a, on the, on the regular minutes, under the city manager's report, in the second paragraph, second line, it says, "Council, discuss vice mayor's conflict with the May 2, 2016 meeting." I'd like to see that sentence come out of there, because it sounds like we're discussing whether or not to give you permission to not be there, and that's, that's not, right here, I'd like that sentence stricken from the minutes.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that. Yeah, whatever y'all want to do. I appreciate that. Whatever y'all want to do, it's fine.
Motion as amended.
Any further discussion? Here in Lenore.
Councilman McGaw?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Any further business before council? Here are none, meetings adjourned. Staff, I hear everyone.